I'd like to call this meeting of our county Board of Commissioners to order. This time I'd like to ask Mr. Steve Johnson if he would offer the invocation.
Let's pray, please. Father, we thank you again for the opportunity to come into your presence, Father, and we ask your blessing upon this board, and, Father, we thank you. Take just a minute to thank you for our chairman and his faithfulness, Father. I pray you'd bless him and encourage him. Pray for Mr. Norman, who can't be with us tonight. He's feeling ill. I pray you'll conduct him to a speedy recovery. We pray ask your blessing upon the staff who will come before us tonight, that you, Father, that they've sought your wisdom beforehand, and that, Father, that we'll listen to petitions and we'll govern wisely. And we ask your blessing upon our country, Father, so many folks through this time of economic dislocation, that you'd just be with them, Father, and you'll bless us and you'll restore us again to our prosperity, and we ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
I stand and join with pledges to the flag of our country.
A pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, since we have no public hearings tonight, our appointments for the board, we're going to go directly into administrative matters. Are any corrections in additions to administrative matters?
Mr. Chairman, there are, there is one under administrative matters. At the request of the Sheriff's Department, Item E will be pulled from the agenda. Item E, that item is to be pulled from the agenda this evening. Also, when you get before, over into the appointments to Board and Commissions, I think you received a note that under the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, that Mr. Donald Howard has indicated that he would not be able to serve, and his name needs to be removed. So, again, the two are deletion of Item E under administrative matters and the deletion of Mr. Donald Howard's name under the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. Mr. Chairman, those are all the adjustments that I have to the agenda.
Hearing the adjustments are all in favor of approving the agenda presented. Any motions made? Passed four zero. At this time, I'm going to turn the actual administrative matters over to Mr. Mashburn.
Yes, Mr. Chair. We only have a few items to go through tonight, but the first one is a request to approve the March 2009 refunds from releases, and we have Mr. Bill Doolittle here, tax administrator, for that purpose.
Good evening. I review the refunds and releases, knowing that the county commissioners are on there. Respectfully request that they be approved.
Okay. I assume that there's a motion to that effect?
Motion to approve.
Motion been made. All in favor, say aye. Have a like sign. Motion passes four zero.
Thank you.
It was still riveting, even though it was seven o'clock.
Next item, memo number three, is a, I'm sorry, memo number two, is a request from the Health Department for approval of Budget Amendment Number 50 to allocate some funds for the Women's Preventive Health Grant, and Donna Campbell, Health Director, will present that.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'm here to ask for approval of a budget amendment in the amount of $22,911 in federal Title X bonus funds. We received notice from the state that we were going to be eligible for a base amount of $2,800, and then because of our increased caseload and our family planning program, we were going to be, receive an additional $20,111 based on performance. And we would ask permission to receive this budget amendment, and we would be using it to purchase some exam tables for the clinic, and also to purchase, go ahead and purchase some computer equipment, and departmental supplies, and some medical supplies. I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions, Donna? Questions, or is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion has been made to approve. All in favor, say aye. Have a like sign. Motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
The next item is memo number three, and we have from the Sheriff's Department to make that presentation Captain Dowdell and, or Chief Dowdell and Mike Phillips, and they will also just continue with Item Four and Item Six.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. We're here tonight to ask for a request to apply for some grants. I'm going to turn it over to Captain Phillips, and he can brief the grants to you. If there's any questions, we'll entertain with that time.
The first grant is the 2009 Recovery Act Grant, Assistance to Local and Rural Law Enforcement. We would use the funding from this grant to hire four new interstate criminal enforcement officers. The grant is all encompassing, covers salary and equipment. The salary will be covered for two years, and it would include all the equipment with The second grant is the, is another Recovery Act grant.
Captain, you may want to let them deal with them one at a time, okay?
Okay.
Anybody got any questions about the first grant?
Captain Phillips, I'm going to ask this question, but it's pertinent to all three of them, so I'm just going to ask it one time rather than belabor the point. I would assume that the equipment that you're going to buy with this grant money, or the personnel that you're going to hire, would have been equipment or personnel that you would have recommended and asked for in forthcoming budgets? Is that a reasonable assumption?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And again, this grant would fund those positions for two years, at which time, after the grant period was over, that's when we would anticipate that they would be included in our budget.
Is it two years or three years?
That grant is for two years. The others are for three.
Okay.
Do we need to make a motion for each individual memo?
For the minutes, I would say yes, sir.
Okay.
I didn't understand you.
Saying, can, do we have to have a motion and vote on Memo Three, Memo Four, Memo Five, and Memo Six, or can we put them all together? So, he's saying they have to be done individually.
Are you, are you happy with that, Steve?
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine with me, yeah. I just, I would like to make it understood, and I talked to these two gentlemen outside, that I'm not going to get into a lengthy dissertation about my appraisal of the Economic Recovery Act, but I'll just leave it said that I don't think it's going to work. In the interim, I support this request, gentlemen, but I need, I need to make something plain. Because I don't think this Recovery Act is going to work, I'm not overly optimistic that in two to three years, the economy is going to be appreciably better than it is right now. And even if it is in that interim, we're still going to have some capital needs that are going to have to be addressed. And the biggest one is related to the folks in your department, and that's jail. I mean, we need to do something with the jail now. We don't have the money, and that problem's not going to be better in three years, it's going to be worse in three years. So, I support this request with the understanding that, feel free to go ahead and ask for these positions to be funded in the fourth year, but I think that this, this board needs to maintain the integrity of its own budget to tell you that that should be left up to our discretion. And I think I speak for the whole board when I say that law enforcement is at the top of our list of priorities, but nevertheless, it will have to compete for other money if things are not appreciably better.
And I will say that the only thing we're asking for tonight is the consent to apply.
Right.
Once, if we are awarded a grant, then we would be coming back before you at that time.
Captain Phillips, are we obligated to, if we bring people on under any of these grant, on these grants, if we bring people on, are we required, when the grant money goes away, is there some obligation for so many years that the county maintain that funding?
Twelve-month retirement period.
Okay, so we are, we are absolutely obligated that we have to continue it for at least 12 months?
Yes, sir.
For the record, I think it'd be good if you went ahead and completed those other two items that have, you just getting ready to bring forward to us.
The second item is also a recovery grant, grant that, it's a mentoring grant. What we would use the funding for is to increase and enhance the programs we already have in place, which are mentoring, mentoring programs that are in school systems, as well as our athletic and creative arts programs that we're offering. There's no match with this grant, and there will be no hiring in this grant. There will be some money set aside for overtime for the officers and volunteers in the program, but there will be no new positions in that grant. That will just be for equipment and other costs associated with the program.
Same question on this one, under, under the front, upfront and ongoing cost, you say there are no upfront costs, okay. Are we required to maintain that funding after the three years?
We're already funding that at this time through the seized funds and different avenues.
Okay.
So, I wouldn't anticipate any significant increase after the grant, because hopefully all of our equipment and those things would be purchased through the grant funding.
Okay.
The last issue is, it's actually the 2009 Justice Assistance Grant, but it has also been placed under the recovery program this year. This is $170,000, and we'll be using it to purchase equipment, in this case, in car cameras for patrol vehicles. There's no match on this grant as well, and there'll be no personnel hiring.
Okay. Any other, any other questions?
I would have any questions, since there, there is one year at the end of these grants that we're going to be responsible for. I do think we'd need to direct the county manager that in the preceding year prior to when these grants are going to end, that he make these folks aware of the possibility of those positions being funded in the subsequent year, that being the fourth year, so that they can begin to adjust their budget accordingly. Because if, if we do it three years, and then we got to fund it the fourth, and the money's not there, if we can make some adjustment a year ahead of time, it's going to give these folks some opportunities. Maybe if someone retires, they can move someone to another position.
That's what, that's eight people.
Right. At least you can ameliorate it to some degree, but...
Mr. Chairman, I'm wondering if that's legal or not. In other words, sometimes these federal funds require that you do exactly what you're supposed to be doing with them, and if you move people around, you can't, can't actually do that. I know, you know, with, having been on the health board...
This issue's come up before, and we've handled it similar. It's just a alert to let everybody know that next year, we're going to have to come up with the money, one way or the other. Hopefully, two years, the money won't be an issue, but who knows?
Well, yeah, I hope you're right. I just don't want us to get into an attitude where we're just going to kick this can down the road and say, well, in four years, we'll wait and see what happens.
And the question for me would be, would it remain a priority in the budget if it weren't paid for with some other funds? Maybe that's a question for you guys, I don't know.
Well, these positions that we, that we normally would have asked for, if the, we're not asking none in this upcoming budget, of course. If we were, due to the population of the county growing, and the needs, the papers that need to be served, that's coming across, that's getting more and more and more put on us, we would ask for the positions anyway, due to nutrition. If we stretched that out three years, you know, would those positions would have been what we've got in three years? And so, I would say, yes, that would have been a priority for the budget at that time.
So, yeah, so these programs are kind of normal operations, they're just an expansion of normal operations, they're not some...
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, very well.
Steve, since you added to your comments, would you go, you going to go ahead and make that into a motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion. And I, gentlemen, before do that, I'm going to make you aware, I appreciate what you do. And I know you're in a recession-proof business, you know, people, the hoodlums stay active regardless, and maybe it can get worse here in economic downturns. Problem I face is those activities that are legal and help fund what you guys do in your service to us, those things subside some where yours go up, so I'll offer that motion that, that we'll go ahead and prove these requests with the understanding that our ability to do so in subsequent years will be determined by the availability of revenue.
Okay. Motion's made, has been made, is understood. Not all, not repeat it. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose like sign. Motion carries four zero.
Mr. Chairman, the next item, which is memo number seven, is to follow up on a directive that the board provided at an earlier meeting on March the 17th, directing the county attorney to review the statutes, to see if they would allow for a established policy on how the county would handle the presenting of sidearms and badges to retiring law enforcement officers. Mr. Pope has done that, and I, his proposed resolution is included in the packet. And basically, what it does is it allows the chairman of the board, after consulting with the sheriff, to go ahead and approve presenting the badge and the sidearm to the retiring deputy. Mr. Pope, do you have any additional comments to make on that?
No, I just, I thought it was significant and important to, that we continue to maintain the dignity and the solemnity of the occasion, and probably figure out some way to have some little ceremony from time to time. It may be that you would want to present it to, once a year, to everybody who retired during that year, or once a quarter, or something like that. This is broad enough to empower you to do that, but to have some little ceremony that would recognize the people for their service, and present whatever plaques and certificates were appropriate.
This doesn't require a vote, I don't believe.
Well, I, I would think so, because otherwise, we have to follow the statute exactly the way it's written, and that basically, this is establishing the county's policy on how you will comply with the current general statute. So, my, my feeling is it would require a vote of the board.
Okay.
Motion to adopt the resolution.
Mr. Caddell made the motion to adopt the regulation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose like sign. Motion carries four zero.
Memo number eight is a request from Centralina to approve the Lake Norman Rural Planning Organization Service Agreement. Ron Smith, County Planning Director, present that.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We have a service agreement that we've, we've dealt with in very similar terms over the last several years. This is from Centralina COG, and this is for their administrative services for the Lake Norman RPO. This would be for the fiscal year '09, '10 budget, so this is the agreement only, and we would not receive an invoice until later on in the year. They say late in '09. The amount that we're, that this is for is $4,500 plus 15 member hours, which I'm sure you all are acquainted with, member hours. These are, and I have fairly limited knowledge of this, but these are essentially hours that we're allotted based on money that we pay towards the COG. And in certain projects, they allocate member hours in lieu of money, as it keeps this $4,500 down from a higher number. So, anytime you're doing a project, you have that option typically. And I don't know what our total member hours come out to. Mr. Mashburn or Susan would probably be better to give you that idea, or an idea about that. But I think that Centralina does a very good job. The RPO is something that we're pretty much mandated to do. Every county in the state is a member of either an RPO or an MPO, and if we were to choose to not sign this and pull out, that would not only have effects on Iredale, but it would have an effect on our entire RPO and the towns within Iredale County. And based on that, I'm recommending approval.
Mr. Smith, I guess what you're saying is the $4,500, and you don't think there's much likelihood that we'll require more than 15 hours worth of work out of those folks?
Well, no, that, I think the, the member hours, I guess you would really equate that to a dollar amount, and that, even if you talk to COG, they'll tell you that that varies. So, it's 4,500 plus a set amount that we would use for, these member hours, we could use it for the RPO, we could use them for another service that they may provide. It's part of our overall allocation that we, we get from our dues, essentially.
I still don't understand, do we pay by the hour for these membership hours? Is that what happens?
I think this is based per capita, if I'm not mistaken.
No, we, we pay dues based upon how many people are in the county, then we're allocated a certain number of service hours that, that we get, and this just comes out of that application. It's like $4,500 and three box tops, okay? You know, I mean, that's, it's, it's a cash amount, and then so many of the hours, because they estimate, just to handle the administrative functions of the RPO, that they're going to use 15 member hours, just supporting the RPO, and, and that's our, our contribution towards it.
I'm still lost. Do we get 15 hours for the $4,500, and then if, say, we, if we, if we needed 15 more hours, then it'd be $4,500 more dollars, is that...
No, no.
It's $4,500 is the amount that we'll pay out in cash, and then they will take out of our bank of hours that we've got with them, 15 hours, to add to that $4,500. But we don't have to pay for those additional 15 hours, because we've already paid for them.
We have, okay.
Yes.
Well, that's good. I won't ask how we paid for them.
I don't want to wear you out, but if I understood you properly, if we don't use these 15 hours, then we can transfer them to some other service that...
And we have done that. If you recall, recently, we came before you and requested some hours to go to the Greater Stateful Development Corporation for a study that they have done every year, and we went in with the city, and I think we put in seven and a half hours, and the city put in seven and a half hours, so we've already used some of those hours.
Okay. How many hours do we have in the bank?
That's, I was afraid you were going to ask that.
You knew I would.
I don't think that we usually use them all.
Now, we, we usually do not, but I cannot tell you right now how many we have, but...
How do we get them in the bank? I wasn't going to ask, but now I've got to ask.
Just by being a member and paying our annual dues, it allows us, let's say, 45 hours of service that we get that we don't have to pay for. Now, many times, when we sign a contract, if it's a contract to assist the planning department with, with doing a land use study, they will say, okay, it's going to cost you $8,000 in cash, and then we'll use 15 of your hours that you've banked. So, in essence, let's say the $8,000 is worth 45 hours, and then, you know, you add the 15 to it, you get a total of 60 hours of time to work on a project. 45 that you would pay for, 15 that you've already paid for. You know, they, they used to call these free hours, and we've debated that long and hard, and so finally, they got around to calling them member hours instead of free hours, because we pay for them, but we pay for them upfront.
You know, I've never been a member of a country club, but this sounds something like a country club, sort of.
Yeah, where you pay your dues, and then you're obligated to eat some of the meals.
Then you have to, you have to eat so much food or something, right?
Right. Except for you, a lot, a lot of their services, you just, you just allocate hours, there's no additional cash that goes with it.
Sometimes.
And this is, this is, this amount is actually lower than what we paid in the past, but very consistent, and went back and looked, and everything's been around 47, 4,700 to 5,000, so the same, same number of hours, too.
Yeah, this isn't a new expense.
I'm glad they changed it from free hours to member hours, because Joel Mashburn could never say free hours without rolling his eyes.
I couldn't either.
And, and just to let you know, the only other options for administration of this particular program, the RPO, is if we took it over, or one of the, one of the cities, or, well, within that RPO, one of the counties or one of the cities would have to do it. So, we are limited in our options.
Any other questions for Ron? Here and none, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we allocate the $4,504 plus the 15 member hours.
Any other discussion? Not? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign.
Just for clarity, I mean, that was an already budgeted item under economic development.
Yes.
Motion carried four nothing.
Thank you.
Mr. Ben Garrison will bring the next item, which is to call for a public hearing.
Good evening. The purpose of coming here tonight is to seek permission to apply for American Recovery and Reinvestment Act funds, I call them stimulus funds, to call for a public hearing to allow citizens to give input into this application at your May 5 meeting, and also at that meeting to adopt a resolution that would authorize me as a transportation director for Iredale County to submit this application. On Friday, April the 10th, I received an email from the NCDOT about these, these grant funds that were going to be available... that were going to be available. They have held several statewide conference calls that I have participated in trying to get more information about these grants, particularly the reporting requirements and the, how these grants are going to create jobs in our economy, and if I would be responsible for reporting on that kind of information. In North Carolina, with these grants, there are $70 million in these grants that are going to 17 urban transit systems, and those transit systems will apply directly with the FTA for funding. On the rural or the non-urban side, there's approximately $33 million that the FTA will award to the NC DOT, and then the non-urban areas would become sub recipients of those grants. They give us until May the 1st to apply for these funds, and again, they require a public hearing. We can't have our public hearing by the application date, but that is acceptable with the DOT. All the projects in these applications have to be capital, and they are funded at 100%. What we're looking at in application for Iredale County, number one, is not expansion vehicles, because we don't want to increase the size of our fleet, because when you increase the size of the fleet, we're increasing our operating costs. What we're looking at in terms of vehicles would be replacement vehicles. What they're allowing us to do is take the four vehicles that are in our FY10 CTP or Community Transportation Application and move those over into this program. There's also four vehicles that we have now that meet their threshold for replacement, so we could be looking at the potential to replace eight vehicles at 100% rather than having to pay the 10% local match, and these vehicles would be replaced over a two-year period. The other thing that we're looking at, of course, would be the funds to put the lathering and logo on those vehicles. Facility improvements, what we're looking at doing, our building, we occupied it in 2003, when the county took over the transit system. We have single-pane windows in that building, and what we would like to do is use these funds to put energy-efficient windows in that building, and also do some siding and repairs to the building, and also put video surveillance in our parking area. Under advanced technology, what we're asking for, we have put AVL, or Automatic Vehicle Locators, and Mobile Data Computers on 21 vehicles in our fleet of 28. And what we would like to do, we have seen the efficiency of that equipment, so what we'd like to do is add that equipment to the other seven vehicles in our fleet. And lastly, in this application, they are going to allow us to charge out vehicle preventative maintenance. Annually, now, we're paying about $40,000 a year for vehicle maintenance, which includes washing and repairs to lifts and so forth. But in this application, they'll allow us to put vehicle maintenance, which would probably save us about $80,000 over two years in our budget. I think the thing that appeals to me about this grant is that some of these are monies that we're going to spend anyway for replacing vehicles. Some of this stuff will help us be more efficient, and the other thing, I'm fearful that the state might cut our road monies, which are our rural operating assistance monies, which we're all hurting for operating assistance, and this might add more money into our budget from things like where we're saving on vehicle maintenance. It might add more money in our budget for service. And I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have, or...
Yeah, how will this affect our dialysis treatment money?
This wouldn't.
Would not have any effect at all?
What I did is I have, last summer, I wrote a federal grant for elderly and disabled, and included dialysis transportation in that, and I am trying to find out from the state when they're going to send me the paperwork so that we can move some of those people under that federal grant. You know, dialysis, a lot of those patients, they're either Medicaid, or we use some of our road monies to transport them, and then the kidney dialysis organization funds some of them, and they've been hit with United Way, some United Way cuts. So we're concerned about how we can use federal funds or whatever to transport some of those folks. And when I wrote that grant last summer, and it has been approved by the Board of Transportation, that includes dialysis transportation. They actually have some people on waiting lists now needing that service, so I'm pushing to get it started.
Thanks. Yeah, buddy. Any questions to Ben?
Mr. Garrison, how competitive are these grants? Are you pretty sure you're going to get this money, or...
Well, we could get some of it, all of it, or none of it. I feel like we'll probably get some of the vehicles. I think that everybody's going to be asking for vehicles, and I think they're going to look very favorably on some of the things like the energy efficiency, the stuff, saving fuel with that technology, or windows and that kind of stuff. So I feel like we'll get a good portion of it.
Okay.
By the way, it does, that does come out to about $549,000, so...
Can you hear anything? Here and no further discussion, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we call for a public hearing on May the 5th, 2009, in regard to the Iredale County Area Transportation System Application with the North Carolina DOT for Federal Aviation, Federal American Recovery and Reinvestment Act.
Thank you, Steve. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign? Motion carries four oh.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the last item on the administrative matters is approval of the minutes for April the 7th.
All in favor of approving the minutes from the last meeting?
I have a question. It's the first time I've been absent, but I wasn't here for the meeting. I guess it's okay for me to vote to approve the minutes, even though I wasn't here.
That's correct. It is.
Okay.
Is that a question, or is that a statement?
Just a question.
Well, you recluse yourself, and you'd still vote with the majority, so... But you maybe have another issue, though.
That's about the prior one. You asked me to bring that up in future meetings.
I recluse yourself if you didn't feel that you had ample information, you think?
The way I understand it, and Bill probably is better at this than I am, but you're required to vote on every issue that's before the board unless you have a personal financial interest in that. And so my opinion is that you're required to vote on it.
Mr. Johnson informs me that in my absence, the board is incapable of error. And so therefore, I should vote to approve the...
You couldn't make a motion to have the minutes delayed if you're not ready to vote on it, then.
Hearing that, there's no reason to carry on any further. Let's go ahead and vote. All in favor of the minutes from the last meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign? Hearing no opposition, I assume it's four zero. Okay. Just a little bit more, folks.
Do you want me to go ahead with the other items? Okay, I will do that. The next item is announcement of vacancies that are occurring on the boards and commissions, and you have two vacancies on the Industrial Facilities and Pollution Control Financing Authority. Under appointments to the boards and commission, you have one vacancy for the Stateful Planning Board ETJ.
Motion tabled, Mr. Chairman.
I'm glad you said that, because I've been waiting a long time for this to happen. The motion's been made to table this nomination. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign?
Next item is the Animal Grievance Committee, one appointment.
Motion tabled. There's a motion to table this appointment for the next meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign?
Next item is Nursing Home Advisory Committee, one appointment.
Motion tabled.
Motion's been made to table this motion into the next meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign?
Item D is Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. You have three appointments. You had one that was being nominated, but that has withdrawn their nomination.
Motion tabled.
Motion's been made to table this, the next, further meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign? Motion carries four oh.
Last item's under appointments to board is the Fairgrounds Capital Improvement Committee. Nine appointments, you have listed in memo number 11, the committee, as it stands at this time for your approval.
Mr. Chairman, I've been working on this, and I've got a couple of commitments, but I was speaking to Mr. Caddell and Mr. Robertson for the meeting. Due to the fact that the committee is partly composed of two members of the Ag community, which in all likelihood will come from throughout the north, I think we need at least one person on there from the southern end of the county. So I'd like to table this until we can get some input from those gentlemen for a nominee.
Motion tabled for the further meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign? Motion carries. Is there any unfinished business?
Just to remind you, the North Carolina Aeronautics Council at the Statesville Airport on May the 8th, we get tour of the facility, and it'll be a real informative meeting if you'd like to come. If you'll let me know, I'll call Phil Collins at the city.
He fly me down from my mountaintop retreat.
We can see if we can arrange that, Mr. Chairman. We'd love to have...
He will, I probably will come.
Okay.
What day of the week is that?
It's on a Friday.
Not as, this is our regular night for public comment, period. So if there's anyone out there who wishes to speak to the commissioners, this is your opportunity to come forward and speak your piece. Seeing no one is rushing to the podium, we'll move on to new business. No new business is leaving, so, I mean, the county manager's been holding it all up.
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of matters. First of all, I do want to remind you that Thursday of this week, beginning at 3 o'clock out at the Ag Resources Center, we will have the reception for retirees and presentation of service awards to employees. And again, we would, if your schedules would permit, we would like very much for you to try to be there. Again, that starts at 3 o'clock at the Ag Center.
Mr. Mashburn, is that going to be a kind of a drop-in thing? If we could get there at 4, would that be all right? I'm not sure.
That would be fine, but I'm anticipating that it will be over by 4:30, so if you can be there by 4 o'clock, that would be great.
Okay.
Okay, in addition to that, I do have a report that I'd like to go over, and I have copies of the statistical report that we have as well. But I wanted to bring you up to date that with the support of the board, the staff has been working over the past few weeks to identify areas where we can reduce expenditures for FY9 and 10 without having a drastic impact on services. Early in the budgeting process, it was recognized that for the first time in my recollection anyway, these goals, or the goals of balancing the budget, could not be achieved without significant reductions in personnel cost. To achieve that end, it was necessary to eliminate positions, curtail salary increases effective July the 1st, 2009, to cancel contracts, to take unpaid leave days, to reduce work hours, and lay off some employees. The first step was to designate several unpaid leave days. Five of these days have been identified to date, which is estimated to save the county over $500,000. It was decided to spread these leave days over a year to delete, and to delete some of those days if there is quick recovery in the economy. We're going to stay optimistic, although that's hard to do at this point. If things should worsen, then additional unpaid leave days will be added. This action applies to all employees except emergency workers who are on a shift schedule. So even in the emergency services departments for administrative positions, management and administrative positions, those unpaid leave days will apply there as well. In addition, certain positions in the Planning and Development Department and the Inspections Department have been reduced to 32 hours a week. Some of that started on April the 23rd. Others will start on May the 7th. This reduction is directly related to a decrease in the building activity in the county. Again, it is hopeful that this economic downturn will be short in duration, but you've heard the projections or predictions as much as I am. Without going into fine details, listed below are some of the other actions that have been taken to date and actions that are still under consideration. So far, we have eliminated funding for 11 positions totaling $623,580. We have canceled contracts and utilized county employees whose workloads are reduced due to the... due to the slowdown in building. We've eliminated, uh, the Sunday library hours, or they will be eliminated June the first, uh, reduced the daily library hours, phasing out the bookmobile, uh, reducing overtime and part-time hours, uh, reduce or eliminate the, uh, funding of outside agencies. And inclusive of the above, it is anticipated that the proposed budget for FY, uh, two thousand, two thousand and nine and two thousand and ten will be three point five percent less than the current year's budget. So, um, a- and if you recall, we, we have already made over ten million dollars' worth of cuts in the current year's budget. So, with, with this, I think, uh, we are gonna be able to certainly balance the, uh, budget for next year. Uh, what concerns us now, uh, is the following year, FY-ten and eleven, because, uh, unless there is a real return in the economy, by that time, uh, I think it's gonna be even more difficult to balance the budget that year than this. I, in closing, the board should be aware that the, uh, actions that I have outlined so far would not be possible without the support and cooperation of everyone involved. Uh, in my thirty-five years of experience, this is the first time that employees had to be terminated or their pay reduced because of something that they had no control over. Uh, I think, uh, y'all, and I've heard you express this, uh, sentiments in the paper, it's not a good feeling to ask our employees to make these sacrifices, although they do understand and appreciate the effort to minimize the impact on them. Uh, in the end, some will have no job and others will see their take-home pay reduced by twenty percent or more. And the only thing we can do at this time is hope that, uh, recovery comes soon and, and moves fast when it finally does arrive. And I just wanted to, to bring you up to date on some of the actions that have been taken place so far. Uh, there are still other items that are under consideration and certainly you'll be kept, uh, well-informed on that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Do you miss Mash- Mashburn? Um, there is no closed session this evening, so if someone will make a motion, we will adjourn.
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been made. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign.